All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. It is Monday, May 6th at 5:23 PM. Sorry, we're running just a hair late tonight. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance stores at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, we did.
Great, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, our board members have had a chance to review our agenda, and at this time, I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any questions on our agenda tonight? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Great, we have an agenda tonight. We also have two new School Board members with us. Paul Fisher and Erin Dove join the Board tonight for a three-year term. And with new Board members, right after an election, we always elect our officers, our President, Vice President, Clerk, and Treasurer. So we'll do that tonight. I will start by taking nominations for President, and then we'll move on to Vice President, and Clerk, and Treasurer. The way we do this is you simply nominate somebody. I will ask for nominations three times. The nomination will need a second. It doesn't need to be a motion, just I nominate whoever, and then someone else can second that, and then I'll call three times, and we'll go from there. If we have more than two people nominated for a position, then I'll ask for a closed ballot, meaning we'll just write down a name and pass it to Deb. If there's only one person nominated, then we'll just go ahead and vote on that person. So at this time, I will take nominations for President.
I nominate Joel Anger for the Office of President.
Are there any ... is there a second to that?
I'll second.
And then, once someone is nominated, they should probably accept the nomination, so I will accept that nomination. Are there any further nominations for President? Any more nominations for President? Any further nominations for Board President? If not, we'll close the nominations, and all in favor of Joel Anger, myself, for meeting the Board President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? So I will stay here and call for nominations for Vice President. And I will nominate Nancy Justman for Vice President.
Second.
There's a nomination for Nancy in a second. Nancy, do you accept that nomination?
I will accept that nomination.
Are there any further nominations for Vice President? Any further nominations for Vice President? Any more nominations for Vice President? If not, the nomination will be closed. All in favor of Nancy Justman as our Vice President, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? So Nancy is our Vice President. I will now take nominations for Board Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Toni Schmidt for Board Clerk.
Second.
Are there any further ... excuse me, Toni, do you accept that nomination?
I accept.
Are there any further nominations for Board Clerk? Any more nominations for Board Clerk? Last call, any more nominations for Board Clerk? If not, the nomination will be closed. All in favor of Toni Schmidt as our Board Clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Congratulations, Toni. And finally, our Board Treasurer position. Are there any nominations for Board Treasurer?
I nominate Chris Swigert for Board Treasurer.
Second.
Are there any further nominations ... excuse me, Chris, do you accept that nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Are there any further nominations for Treasurer? Any more nominations for Treasurer? Last call, any more nominations for Treasurer? If not, the nomination will be closed. All in favor of Chris Swigert being our Board Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? And there you have it. You guys look up sometime why I call for three nominations. There's a reason behind that, and if you Google "Roberts Rules of Order," you'll read some really boring text as far as why people do that, but that's why we do that, so I know it sounds goofy. Congratulations to our officers, who will serve as officers for a one-year term as an officer of the Board. We will move on to our support staff awards. Is Crystal Buckhouse here tonight? Oh, boy, come on up, right here. Face this way, please. Crystal is the Food Service Site Manager at Badger, and she's been with the district for 16 years, and she has won one of our Support Employee of the Year Awards. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Crystal. Crystal's a great team leader. She's always involved with supporting the many goings-on at Badger. She's never won to not have team spirit. If there's a better way to do things, Crystal's the first with ideas, and then she makes them happen. Her team oozes school spirit with social media posts, costumes, leading her team with a float and a homecoming parade, and all-around good attitudes because of the leader who she is. In her 16 years with the West Bend School District, Crystal has displayed a commitment to her career, the kids, and her staff. She's always encouraging them and trying to make things more efficient for all involved. She's trustworthy, has the highest standards for herself and her staff, and is an advocate for school nutrition. Crystal is very motivated when it comes to making sure she is current on any and all changes in regulations. She attends the annual State School Nutrition Association Conference every June. She also attends chapter meetings and makes sure her staff is always aware if anything has changed. Overall, Crystal is an exceptional employee. The school nutrition team is extremely lucky to have such a great employee, and Crystal, the entire West Bend School District, is proud to have you as a wonderful employee for our kids, who see you every day, I'm sure, with a big smile on your face, sometimes a costume. And on behalf of the whole Board, congratulations.
We do have a little bit of an award for you, and so I'm happy to give you this and do some fun with that. Congratulations.
All right, is Rebecca Hebert here? Did I say your last name right? Hebert?
A. Bear, do you wanna be heard?
A. Bear, all right, Rebecca. Front and center. Rebecca is a Food Service Site Manager at Silverbrook, and she has been with the district for eight years, and she, too, is one of our Support Employee of the Year Award winners. So a little bit about Rebecca. Rebecca is a hands-on manager. She's always willing to lend a helping hand when needed. The camaraderie is great in the kitchen because of her leadership. Her presence is always visible at every lunch hour, willing to answer questions from staff and students. When the kitchen is short-staffed, Rebecca is right there to step in and help. She's an outspoken advocate for the breakfast and lunch program. She's always making sure that she is serving the highest-quality products and that her lunch lines look appealing, her kitchen and cafeteria look the best that they can. Rebecca likes to decorate the serving area for all the holidays and to make it look welcoming and festive. She's an active participant of the National School Breakfast Week. She has games, activities, and prizes for the kids. Rebecca and her team make posters, wear fun T-shirts, and make sure that the kids get excited to be going through the breakfast and lunch line every day. She also takes an interest in her employees' personal life by attending concerts, participating in 5Ks, and volunteering for causes that are important to them. Rebecca is an amazing employee and friend. The school nutrition department is lucky to have her on their team, and so are we. And Rebecca, congratulations to you, and thank you for all you do for our kids at Silverbrook.
Congratulations. Thanks for being here tonight. Congratulations.
Would the two of you like to come say any words at the podium tonight? You don't have to, that's okay, but I will tell you, we have a really cool celebration for our award winners, our service anniversary people on May 23rd. It's a Thursday night, and would love to have you there, where we recognize you again, we have some food and drinks, and it's really a nice time, so please consider coming to that on May 23rd. Congratulations. All right, we will move on to our public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anybody wishing to address the Board tonight for public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. And on tonight's consent agenda, we have minutes of the April 15th regular Board meeting, dispersments posted to May 6th, 2019, ratification of contracts, 2019-2020 continuing contracts for full-time certified staff, and 2019-2020 continuing contracts for part-time certified staff.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second by Chris and Toni. Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? That motion carries. Tonight, on our action items, we've got the West Bend Trail Sharks Mountain Bike Club proposal. And who's presenting that? Is Rob?
Yes.
All right, Rob, thanks for being here.
So we were here at the Board meeting to propose that our second team is accepted by the School District as a club sport for our kids to participate in sport and potentially earn a four-year warranty. So yeah, a bunch of people from the kid ... our kids and here from the team sitting over here, and we're hoping to get the best answer that we can ask for.
I have the best motion for you. I move to approve the recognition of the West Bend Trail Sharks Mountain Bike Club as a club sport.
Second.
We should Google that. We do have a motion by Nancy and a second by Toni, I believe. And the motion is to approve the Trail Sharks as a club sport. Are there any questions or discussions or anything from the crowd that we'd like anybody to hear on this?
I just thought it was an excellent presentation last time, and I'm really thankful for you and the coaches and all the students who are involved, and the parents. It's apparent that you have a passion, and you know that you've really turned a small group into a thriving club, and so congratulations.
And I agree with Mrs. Justman, and what I also say is I appreciated the information on this focus on safety, and clearly, that's top of mind, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Hope to have my own kid on the club when he gets up to the high school, so very cool.
Does he pass me a message?
Yeah, he's ready next year, then. Any more questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, congratulations. Cool, guys, thank you very much for coming tonight. If you'd like to sit through our meeting, you certainly can, but if not, you're welcome to leave, too. So we'll move on to our discussion tonight of first reading of revised Board Policy 342.7.
Services for English.
Cool, I will, thank you. Services for English learner, thank you. And Laura's gonna take us through that.
Formerly, we had, and currently in our Board Docs, is Policy 342.62, a recommendation, and we met with ... our recommendation is the staff, and we met with Policy Committee, and Policy Committee has moved this on to the full Board for consideration, renumbering the policy so that it flows with some of our other policies to 342.7, as well as revising the content of the policy to reflect our most recent changes in our requirements, as well as best practice. Are there any questions about the policy itself?
On first reading, this is always under a discussion item, and then when it comes back at our next Board meeting, if we are all present, we can vote on it during that meeting. If not, then we vote on it during third reading. So tonight's just a discussion question time.
I have a question, pretty similar to surrounding districts.
Correct.
Correct, and I'm assuming also with Wasby or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's built off the Wasby recommendations.
Great. Any further questions on this? All right, we'll see you in two weeks for second reading.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Tonight, we also need to have a quick discussion on our Board meeting structure, committee structure, and eventually, we'll be setting the Board calendar, which we do a year ahead of time. There's a draft in the agenda item tonight. This is just a discussion, but Don, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to you. He and I have kind of been talking about this, and he's gonna give us some ideas here.
So I have shared with several of the Board members a concept that would like you to consider, and that would be to have one regular Board meeting a month, and the second Board meeting per month be a structured Committee of the Whole. And so, we have some Committee of the Wholes now, but oftentimes, they're more of a reactionary type meeting as opposed to a planned meeting. And so, what we would look at is the first meeting of each month as a business meeting. And we would do all of the motions, the normal business meeting. The second meeting of the month would be a Committee of the Whole concept, and we would have it ... and it could be something at the last minute that we want to discuss a curriculum policy, we want to discuss the teacher compensation, we want to do a variety of different things. But what we would like to do is to have the structure so that we're really providing an information setting for all of you at those meetings, and, you know, maybe in September, for example, or August, Committee of the Whole. The first 45 minutes or half hour of the meeting would be designed for Mr. Harder to go through and look at our technology, okay? It would be a facilities update. It would be a whatever. We have elementary principals who are gonna be here next meeting, and so that might be a good example of the Committee of the Whole concept, okay? We could still recognize students at the Committee of the Whole, just like we do students at a regular meeting. So we don't have to wait until a full month before we recognize students for their accomplishments. We can do that at any time, but it would be very, very rarely would we have any action items on the Committee of the Whole. It really would be just for you to get additional information. I believe, two years ago, the Board suspended the committee structure, okay? And so, the last two years, the only major committee that's met on a regular basis has been Policy Committee. And we would continue to have Policy Committee meet. Maybe it's not every month, but we would have a schedule, and so originally, we had looked at some of the committees maybe getting filled tonight, but there really is no ... we can wait until the next meeting to fill those committees, too. And so, there's a CISA representative, and so they ... we have to send that name in soon. And there's somebody for the Foundation, as well as the Policy Committee and the Chair those, but for the most part, want you to consider, do you want to have two meetings just like we always have, and that's your call? Or would you prefer to have one regular meeting and then one Committee of the Whole meeting? And if we have that Committee of the Whole concept, would ask that we suspend ... I don't think we want to change the rules yet, because we want to see how it works. Suspend the rules for one more year on the other committee meetings, and if we need to have a special committee of the ... we can certainly appoint them at any point in time and ask them to do some more research into our facilities, or into technology, or whatever the case might be, athletics, or whatever. But if we're going to suspend the rules for policies or for committees, then I think we need to have a better structure as to how everybody is getting in information, and not just hit and miss. You can give us suggestions as to what you would like on those, obviously, at your meeting, but we would also bring you suggestions and say, for the next six months, these are the things that we would like to cover each month. And so, that's the whole concept behind it. If we do the Committee of the Whole each month, we might set up in this structure, just like we have in the ... or depending on what's being discussed, we might decide to do the round table, or the rectangle, or the parallelogram, or Joel's son has got a math test and has got vocabulary, and so he was practicing his math terms, and so we might decide how we want to have our tables set up, or keep this format in its ... just like this. And then with that, I looked at possible Board dates. Not for you to vote on tonight, but to look at them, and so with that, there's one in July, like we normally have, okay? There's one in December, like we normally have had, and there's one in May. Not because I only need one in May, because we can always add a second one, but the Committee of the Whole gets to be late in April because of spring break and Easter and some other things, and so we don't have a meeting until the 27th. And so, to not have one back-to-back, I skip the first week in May, and then if you do the 11th, and then if you do the next week, that would be the awards night that we have tonight, and so we talked about avoiding that. And so, take a look at these as a possible schedule for next year, knowing that if there's a meeting that we need to add in May, we can always add another meeting. If there's any other meeting that we have special Board meeting, we can certainly do those, but that's my thought process.
Couple of things. So I'm a big advocate for recognizing student and student achievement, so I really ... I'm not opposed to the structure, I just want to make sure that we still do that, and we give parents the opportunity to come if their students are being recognized, or siblings, or whatever. I would also want to ensure that for the students that are here taking their notes, that if they came to a Committee of the Whole, that would also count for their class, because we'd hate to make you sit through, too, if you don't have to. And then my last comment is, when are elections ... what are election days? Like that April 13th, that's actually the day after Easter, so we don't have school that day, so I'm wondering about if you'll have people who are still on spring break, and then how does the election fall within there?
You can let him do that prior Tuesday? Because it's always the first Tuesday.
So the 13th would still be the current Board, and then the 27th would be the new Board?
That's correct.
Actually, election day might be April 1st.
No, I think it is the 7th, or the 6th or the 7th.
Well, I believe, because that was a discussion, let me look here.
April 6th would be the one.
So it must be the 7th.
April 6th is the week ... the 6th is spring break.
Mm-hmm, but we're off through the 13th, right?
We're off through the 13th, and so, yeah, maybe ... I didn't put it the 6th in April, because that is the Monday of spring break.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to do that.
Okay, I'd hate to mess up somebody's trip.
Please don't.
And so, the 13th is Easter Monday, so either you do the 13th, or you do the 20th, and then you only have one in April as opposed ... you know, that is something you could look at. You could do one in April, the 20th, but is that also ... is that ... that would be the start of the new Board? Because it's the fourth ... is it the fourth Monday? Well, then, the new Board wouldn't start until the 27th, because the third Monday would be the 20th. If you did that, then you could have May 4th as a Board Meeting Night.
That would be scholarship.
As scholarship night.
You want to do that?
So then you go to the 11th, and then if you do the 11th, then you've got the 25th is Memorial Day. And so, either you're gonna have back-to-back, which is not all bad, you can ... especially if you're having one as a Committee of the Whole and the other one as a business meeting. So it really wouldn't matter to have the back-to-back and go from there.
The 13th and 27th of April is good for me personally. My family won't be traveling on Easter Monday, but I do understand people will. And I also like the fact that a new Board would be able to start on April 27th as opposed to waiting into May, so I do like that.
There is school.
There is school on April 14th, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So the ... most people, even if they are traveling that week, would ... I mean, Monday becomes a travel day, so.
In the following year, we have school on Easter Monday. I mean, with the calendar that was just approved, then Easter Monday is a school day.
The other thing we always look at is the Foundation Golf Outing. When is that? You've arranged for that? Okay.
The only other thing that I would suggest changing is, when you look at October, October 7th is the regular Board Meeting, and I didn't think of this, certification of the levy is typically at the end of October, and usually scheduled for the last Board Meeting of the month. Do you decide if you want to flip that, or do you want to ...
Deb, do we have ... last year, did we have a regular meeting the day of the ... oh, that was ... excuse me, that's ... I was saying the annual meeting, but that's in October. So the question would be, and I'll visit with Andy. Andy, if you believe if we're going to be able to certify the levy October 7th, we could certainly certify before then. If we can't do it until after the 21st, or until that third one, then whether we flip-flop those meetings, or we have that as a Committee of the Whole, but we have a action item on that, that would be an example of one that we truly need to certify the levy on the 21st of October, and so rather than have a Committee of the Whole with no action, it would be a Committee of the Whole, but the first item on there would be an actual Board Meeting Agenda Item.
I would agree with that. The information that we receive from the Department of Revenue as well, from the state, is not even available until after October 15th.
Right.
So that is a good example of one.
Yeah, so that would be one that we'd certainly want to have, or need to have, a action item on the same night as the Committee of the Whole.
I'm ... I like the idea of switching the 7th and 21st, the ... because there won't be a Committee of the Whole meeting in September.
Right, that would be a good idea. So we could flip-flop the whole thing around and just have Committee of the Whole on the 7th.
Regular Board Meeting.
And regular Board Meeting on the 21st. So not asking for any action tonight, take a look at it, take a look at your calendars, look at the school calendars, and obviously, there are gonna be times when people have to miss, but if we can avoid it, we certainly want to, and so we'll put it on the agenda as an action item for next meeting, with the flip-flop in October of the Committee of the Whole and the regular Board Meeting. And I think maybe there's gonna be a person or two that's gonna be gone next meeting. Make sure and give me your input, so if you have any suggestions on that as well.
And we can certainly have some more discussion here tonight about it. I do have a couple of quick comments I'd like to make as it relates to our structure and things. I like this, one meeting a month with Committee of the Whole. There are a couple of other assignments that we need to make, and I do like having a Policy Committee. I like having Chris chair that Committee, if he's willing to do that, and that's not a motion and a second, that's just kind of an assignment, if you will, and if that's something he's willing to do, because I ... the Policy Committee is truly a working committee. And then, like we have tonight, you have a first reading, and if we don't like something in a first reading, it can be sent back to committee. So I think it makes sense to continue having that Policy Committee, and you name a chair simply to form the agenda and run the meeting, and I think Chris does a great job at that. I think having Chris continue to do that with some expertise from last year and things just makes sense. I also think it makes sense to have a new person on that Policy Committee every year. And so, I'm looking at Erin and Paul. You don't need to tell me tonight, but I hope you would consider that, so that next year, if Chris doesn't want to do it, then you can step in and become the Chair of that Committee next year, that sort of thing. The other committees, I think we take care of in Committee of the Whole meetings. We need a CISA 6 representative to go to the CISA meetings. I think those are every two or three months, is that right, Toni?
Every month.
Once a month? Up in Oshkosh, so that's kind of a commitment to do that. If that's something that is of interest to somebody, I need to know that. And then we also need a Wasby delegate, which goes to the Wasby Convention in Milwaukee in January. I was the delegate this year, Tiffany was my backup. I couldn't make it, and then we had a snowstorm, and so Tiffany didn't even go, but that's another one. It's a conference that we need to send a representative to, if we can. Superintendent Crookedard will certainly be there and can vote in our place if we need him to, like we did this year. But other than that ...
Head Start.
Oh, the Head Start Policy Council is another one, and that meets ...
That meets the second Thursday of each month.
Second Thursday of each month is the Head Start Policy Council, and then the West Bend School Foundation always kind of saves us a spot on their Board for one of our School Board members to be a part of the Foundation, and Deb, they meet every two or three months?
Every two months.
Every two months.
Second, two.
Great. And so, that's something, that's a neat organization that helps with fundraising and fundraising cool activities within the district, so again, an opportunity to kind of serve some more, if you will. Those types of things, if you hear of ... if you've just heard of something that interests you, just email me and let me know. The policy thing, Chris, can I look at you tonight and ask, are you okay with being our Policy Chair?
Sure, I'm willing to continue, sure.
Okay. And if there's anybody else who would like to serve on that Committee, then, you know, let me know. And that Committee is posted, and so even if you're not on the Committee, if you want to show up to Policy, that's fine. That's welcome for everybody. I guess the last assignment thing, which I took care of last week, is who hands out graduation diplomas. Nancy hasn't done one yet, and she's got a kid graduating this year, so she's gonna do both East and West. I thought it was a great idea to have a new Board member do it. It's a great way to start your term on the Board, so I've asked Erin to do one, and then I asked Chris Erin to do one and then I asked Chris to do the other one. Tony has done a couple. I have done one and I'm happy with that. But with Paul and Kurt, you both have kids graduating next year. And so I want to make sure if we can, I know there's a chance I might not be here next year, but if I'm not, I want you guys to be able to look at the board and say, look, I didn't do one last year because I got a kid graduating and I want to do it. So that's why I didn't ask either of you to do it, so that you could do it next year. So anyway, that's kind of, my rant here is our structure goes, but like I said, CISA 6, Head Start Policy, Wasby Delegate, Foundation Rep, any, being a policy committee member, any of those of interest, anybody, shoot me a note. And if you have further questions on those, certainly ask Chris, ask superintendent or ask Deb what they all entail. So are we kind of looking good as far as this calendar idea of one a month plus a committee of a whole? And if we are, we'll bring it back for vote in two weeks, but.
I just have a comment. I love the suggested meeting structure, committee of the whole being more proactive with our regular board meetings. They're always structured with agenda topics that you don't go off in committee of whole. We're going to work, work on enhancing the school district, work on various things that were done, I can imagine, tech and trades and STEM programs that is excellent here. How, how do we make them better? Literacy, how do we improve that? All the rest of the programs, you could name them from A to Z. So I love that structure, being able to work proactively, always improve the district.
Awesome.
I agree with Kurt. I guess my question would be, if we're cutting the number of business meetings effectively in half, what impact does that have on us in terms of transacting the business of the district? Do those meetings go longer? Not that we can't take on actionable items in a committee of the whole, but the idea would be to keep that more informational. So what are the implications in that respect?
I'll let Don and maybe even Andy Sarno answer that because you're right, there are certain things that from DPI's perspective have to get voted on and some of them are financial and some of them have to do with Head Start. But superintendent, why don't you take it from?
You know, I'll start and give, turn it over to Andy. I just, the number of action items that we have are really very limited. And so that, we certainly need them and we just need to, if we go to this structure, the administration, the cabinet, the leadership team needs to be extremely organized. We need to make sure that we know in advance that this needs to go here because it's going to be voted on the following month and you need time to digest it. And so Andy and I have visited. Andy, tell them your thoughts on, on that. Go from there.
Yeah. I, I think it's all about planning and I, and Superintendent Crookigard brought this forward. I, I can't think of a situation that would be problematic in being able to bring something forward for your approval that you need to be involved with in a timely fashion. So I, I don't have any concerns at this time.
You know, Head Start wise, is that, seems like we vote on Head Start stuff all the time, so.
Thank you. We talked about that this morning and because the grant is due March 31st, I have to backtrack to that. So even if we need to have a extra conversation about Head Start, Don assured me that we could do that within the structure because I would need to have it approved by the policy council and the school board. And we start with our self-assessment in January. So given that timeline, I'm confident that we will meet the requirements of Head Start.
Andy, the one comment you and I talked a little bit about was the reconciliation. Why don't you share that?
Yeah. So regarding the timing of the reconciliation that's brought forward as a part of the consent agenda, you would still be doing that, but if we had the meeting early in the month and even at the latter part of the month, the timing of the reconciliation when we bring that forward, there would probably be the first month a gap and then we'd be on a monthly cycle again that that would be approved. But you know, if, if the month ends on March 31st, we're not going to have a reconciliation, all the paperwork done by April 6th or April 3rd, something like that. So we'd be on a month delay, but once we get on that cycle, that would then be brought for, for your approval on a monthly basis, just like it always has been.
Good question. Does that answer your question? Any more questions, discussion on this? If not, we'll talk about it again next week or in two weeks. Great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. We'll move on to a report on the Pathways Charter School transition.
So when we, the board had voted to not renew the contract for the Pathways Charter School, one of the things you asked was for several updates along the way. And we have previously informed the board that we did meet with, we offered every family multiple opportunities to meet. We met with every family that wanted to participate in a meeting. And since that time, we have, the staff have met to discuss the student placements, the information that came from those individual meetings. And they have had some very robust conversations around the coursework, the classes, and then specifically the individual student schedules. So those, the students at Pathways were definitely honored and very carefully cared for through that scheduling process at each of the schools. So both at Badger and at the high schools. We've also been in contact with DPI and have the specific requirements for what, how are we handling the, the items that were purchased with the federal dollars. And so we also met with Pathways staff and a governance council representative last week to talk about how we're tracking those items and the specific dollar values that they were when they were purchased and how we're determining the dollar value of those amounts now. So the requirement is that we identify all of that and submit it to DPI either before July 1, on or before July 1, or 30 days after the student's last day of attendance, whichever is sooner. So that means by July 1, we have to submit that to DPI. And I'm confident that we'll meet those timelines with regard to the requirements for closing the school.
So this was my big request. So I have a few questions. So you know, I understand you probably didn't meet with 100%, but I get what you're saying, people who wanted to meet. Without giving, obviously I don't want individual student information, but I'm wondering, so we had, how many students total?
At Pathways, there were 58.
Yeah. 58. And how many are graduating of the 58?
Seven.
Seven. So 51. So are we, do you have any idea, are we retaining 90% of those students for next year? Do you have any clue on that or?
I believe that we are retaining at least 90%. There may be some that are open enrolled to Pathways that are still considering some options within and outside of the district.
Thank you.
Any more questions on Pathways? Thank you. Superintendent Crookigard's report.
Just a quick, a couple of quick comments. One is our Green Tree principal position. We had 27 candidates. And so eight are internal candidates, so we're going to interview those eight internal candidates on Tuesday, tomorrow. We also had 19 candidates from outside and we're going to interview five of those on Wednesday. So a total of 13 interviews. We'll narrow it down to four or five, depending on, on what we're looking at. And then we'll do final interviews on the following Thursday. And so hope to have a proposed candidate for you at our next school board meeting. And so we have just some excellent candidates. Nancy, I see it looks like a question.
I saw that, did you? So many, many years ago, I might have been involved in the hiring of the principal at McLean. Are you involving any parents from that school or the PTO or?
Yes. We, the process will include several parents and several teachers and that will be a interview process. And they're going to give not necessarily first, second, third choice, but just what are the strengths, what do we see as, as an area for some concerns or suggestions for that person. It will not be a open discussion so that one person in the process doesn't have the ability to persuade others. And so as soon as the interview is complete, then they will do their summary of, of strengths and areas of possible improvements or whatever terminology we're using. That won't be for the initial screening. The initial screening is going to be Dave Hamelman, Laura and Jen Gettermann. And so those will be the three who will narrow it down. And then when we actually do the interviewing, there will be a couple of different committees. The first committee will be interviewing with the teachers and the parents. And then when it's, when they're done with that group, then that candidate will then come and interview with Don, Laura and Jen Gettermann. So us, that three will make the final decision, considering the input from that first group. And so we'll have, like I said, four or five on Thursday for that process. So that's the Green Tree positions. Lenny and I are going to go to Oshkosh on Thursday for a Wasby School Law Seminar. And so it's Thursday night at CISA 6 and that would be a good opportunity for Lenny to get a little bit more experience with some of the rules and regulations and it, Don as well. And so we're going to do that. Soon, we're going to go over to our scholarship meeting, our scholarship awards program tonight. And if you have an opportunity, some of you are going to present, others you just may, just go over and enjoy it. 182 students are going to receive a lot of money. Okay. I can tell you the amount. I have it here, but I'll wait because I'm going to announce that tonight at the meeting. But 182 students got scholarships and it's a lot of money. And so I'm just excited to be part of the process. I had an opportunity to visit with some young girl at Pick and Save on Saturday. I was purchasing some things and I asked her if she was in high school and she said, yeah, she's a senior at East. And so I asked her if she was getting a scholarship and she just, just lit up. She was so excited that she's actually getting two. And so I don't know the dollar amounts, but she was getting two scholarships and she was just so excited about the opportunity. And, and what a great event, not only for our kids, but for us to be part of a community that is willing to share such huge amounts of dollars because they believe in our school system and they believe in the kids that we have going to our school. So that's tonight. Unfortunately, we had to cancel a meeting on Friday. We were scheduled to have a meeting, but it, there was, we accidentally didn't put it on the internet. Okay. And our policy says it's supposed to be there and we didn't do that. And so when it's brought to our attention that we're going to be out of policy, out of compliance before we have the meeting, and then we really don't have any choice but to cancel. It's, if, if we would have had the meeting and we didn't realize that we had, had goofed up, we could have seen, well, we really didn't realize we goofed up. It was posted in seven other spots. It met all the state requirements, but it didn't meet our local requirements. And as long as our local requirements, it was brought to our attention before the meeting. When I visited with Joel, there really was no other option but to cancel the meeting. And so we'll try to, to get that rescheduled sooner rather than later so that we can do those tours of our facilities. And so the last one I have is just if you can put on your calendars, May 23rd is our employee recognition night. Is that's when we're going to recognize our retirees, recognize our ROLPHS award winners, recognize our support staff award winners, some others as well. And so if you can make it, I believe it's at the 23rd, it's at the Columbian?
The Columbian, yep.
The Columbian. And so I have received information. I, I think tickets are still available. If you haven't purchased a ticket, let Dave's office know and we'll get you a ticket. So that's all I had. And like I said, I hope you have an opportunity to go over to the high school tonight for the awards program.
Cool. Great. Any questions for Superintendent Crookigard? Our board calendar coming up is, as Don mentioned, a potential reschedule of our tours could be as early as this Monday, the 13th. And I think Mr. Zweigert hasn't responded to that yet. Let Deb know if you get a chance here, yeah, tonight or tomorrow, but potentially the 13th on Monday. We've got our next regular board meeting on May 20th and we're going to recognize some of our ROLPHS Teacher of the Year award winners, which four teachers received the Teacher of the Year award today. And it was a neat, neat day. I was able to be at all four of them and they, Dave and his team does a great job of surprising the teachers. They kind of know that someone's going to win from the staff when Claire Rolf shows up, but then when they bring out that person's family, well, then the teacher just starts crying and it doesn't matter if it's a male or female, they all start crying. But we'll, we'll get to know those four at our next board meeting on the 20th. We've got another board meeting on June 10th and then a board meeting on June 17th. There is a little event going on, on Wednesday at 9:30 at Badger. And if anyone is available on, on Wednesday at 9:30, let Don know. Happy to have as many board members there as we can, but if, if one of us could show up, that would be wonderful. I cannot go, but just let Don know if you're available at 9:30 on Wednesday.
It's Nurse Recognition Day. And so we're going to recognize our nurses for that and there's some special things that are going to be. At the same time, if you let us know if there's more than four or four or more that are planning on being attendance, that Deb needs to, to post it, that not necessarily that it's a board meeting, but there might be a quorum of the board in attendance at the presentation.
Any questions on our calendar?
Maybe going back to the, maybe Don or Joel, you could address why we're meeting to tour the facilities.
Sure. Do you want me to or do you want to, Kurt? Why are we touring the facility? Go ahead, Don.
Just a, a couple of reasons. One is, you know, we, obviously we just failed a referendum. So we have some of the issues that when, when the referendum was put forward, those issues haven't gone away based on the fact that we didn't pass the referendum. So that's part of it. And so we have new board members, but also I'm not so sure that everybody has had an opportunity to be in all of our buildings. And so rather than just visit the two that were on the referendum, the high school and Jackson, we said, well, let's try to make it to all of the buildings. I think Joel said he's never been over to the ROLPHS building before. And so, so we, we would like you to see all of the different facilities. Dave Hamel, or Dave Ross has, has put together, you know, we've done these 10 things, we've got these five things left to do. This is the dollar amount. And so he's done a great job of trying to get us some information. I was going to mention that if we meet next Monday and if you can't make it, but would like to still have a tour of the facilities, Dave and I'll take you. Okay. And so that I, I truly want you, everybody to have an opportunity to visit all the facilities if you can. But if your schedule doesn't allow you to meet on Monday, but you can meet next Wednesday, we'll try to make it work so you can go see them next Wednesday as well or, or whatever date it might be. You know, the one thing that I really would like to do is to address the high school library. And so we have two libraries, east and west. We've talked about replacing the carpet. The carpet in west is dangerously in need of repair. The east is just shot, but it's not, it's not.
Your students are agreeing with you on here. They're laughing.
It's not as bad as the west. The west has got ripples in it. So before we make those decisions, I really would like the board to come up and say, you know, we, we talked about going from two libraries to one library. You know, we can't do that overnight, but is this the time for us to start looking at doing some things and coming up with a master plan? So rather than just replace carpet in one, do we replace the carpet to look big picture at the same time? And so actually Ralph, Dave, Ross, Tim Harder and the head librarian and I are going to go a week from Friday to visit three or four schools in the area that have had recent library renovations. So that we can look, we don't need a Taj Mahal, but we're going to, if we do something new to our library, we want to turn it into a point of destination for our entire school. We want it to be something that they're proud of, something they're going to use on a regular basis. And we would like to not reinvent the wheel. So Kurt, I don't know if that's a long answer to a short question or not, but that's truly what we're looking at.
Good question. Any more items for follow-up discussion?
I just had one. So Saturday night, I think, I believe both east and west Booster Clubs did fundraisers at, at separate locations. And as a board member, that was difficult for me because I, I would love to attend both. So if there are any east and west Booster people out there, I would encourage you to potentially not plan to do those on the same date in the future because it's difficult to split yourself. Or potentially look at maybe one large fundraiser that everyone could attend with the funds being split. Of course, I'll send a lovely email that outlines my plan there for people. But just for those listening at home, it, it was just difficult because you really had to make a choice. And I think there are many people who, you know, support both or, or at least board members would love to support both. So that was a little difficult.
Yeah. And very true comment. And I believe I visit, you know, that I think our athletic directors would like to see more of that as opposed to less. Not that we're trying to, to combine east and west, but there are certain things that we can do together that just make sense. Maybe it's one golf outing rather than two and we split the proceeds. There's a variety of things that we can do that we aren't doing right now that just make more sense than what we have in the past.
Good comment. Any more questions, discussion? Motion to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
Bring your paper workup, students will sign. Get your papers as quick as possible. This is a nice short one that you came to.